Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. One A roll call and hostile action. Excuse any member of the governing board.
Mayor Percy Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Lazar Juárez.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chávez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
Thank you.
Great, we do have one. Two B pledge and the invocation by Chief Harvey.
Affirmative allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands on nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, thank you so much for the privilege of being here today and for the good health as we lift up those who are hurting today as well. We pray for a fresh measure of wisdom over this commission, our elected officials, and our city leaders so that we can make the very best decisions for our city. We also pray for safety and peace over our city, our state, and our country. Again, we thank you for all that is good, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, go to two proclamations if you allow me to go a little bit out of order. Can you, Jose, can you bring up Ms. Tragulat?
Mom's here also, right? Ms. Tragulat, here?
Ms. Tragulat, here. Is she? Where's she at? Oh, there she is. Ma'am, come on up.
Hi, Tom.
Ma'am, we're gonna go ahead and go to item two B proclamation proclaiming Diego Goku Aguilera Day.
Your mom?
Yes, I'm the mom.
Okay. You guys from Far?
Yes, we live about four blocks from the railroad tracks that way.
Oh, very nice. Can your son hear us? Can Diego hear us?
I don't know. Can you hear us, Diego?
Yes, I can hear.
So, I just wanna make sure to understand this. Goku is your middle name?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah, my father chose that name.
Okay. Is that why you have the poster behind you?
Yeah, that was from my father.
There you go. That's a, it's, it's interesting, 'cause that's a, my son grew up with that game, and now he plays it online. That's when I saw the name, I said, it can't be that, but I guess it is. All right, all right.
If you allow me, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I made a deal with their dad. If I chose their first names, Hispanic names, he was allowed to pick anything he wanted, but I never expected Goku. And our other son is Gohan, and we have a daughter named Bedell. Those are all their middle names.
See? That's what you get for making a deal. She should've just stayed in charge. All right, well, welcome. Both of you, welcome.
Thank you.
So, whereas on September seventeen, twenty twenty, Diego Goku Aguilera started on his, his first day at work at Walmart in Storm Lake, Iowa, and where the associate who was providing training to Diego became unresponsive, and whereas Diego recognized the signs of cardiac arrest and responded to the victim's aid, and whereas Diego immediately began CPR, providing the victim with a combination of chest compressions, and whereas after several minutes of effective CPR, Diego was relieved by emergency responders from Storm Lake Police and Fire Departments. And whereas the victim regained a pulse and was breathing prior to medical transport, and whereas the victim was transported to the hospital, and due to the life-saving efforts of Diego, the victim recovered and was able to walk out of the hospital within a week. And whereas although many people are trained in CPR, some become hesitant to respond in a real emergency. Diego was a hero on September seventeenth, as he responded without hesitation and utilized his training to save a life. Now therefore, I am blessed to be the mayor of the city of Far, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the entire city commission, do hereby recognize and with respect and gratitude the heroic actions and selflessness courage of Diego Goku Aguilera in the act of saving a life, and do hereby proclaim November second, twenty twenty, Diego Goku Aguilera Day. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Far to be affixed on the second day of November, twenty twenty. There you go, Goku.
Thank you.
Now, Mom, who's gonna go first? You or your son? Anybody wanna say something?
Um, I would like to say a couple words. Thank you to the city of Far for this recognition.
Of course.
Um, through this pandemic, we hear many things, but to hear something positive and to hear from one of our own Valley go out. He's actually at Buena Vista University. He followed his dream to wrestle university level. So, so he went and he got a scholarship because of his academics.
Very nice.
So, he's there, and we miss him dearly. He's all the way in Iowa. But due to him seeing me struggle paying for his tuition, he's like, nope, I gotta get a job. And I was hesitant, no, 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 and he decided, yes, I'm gonna do it. And he did it, and then to know that his first day he would save a life is a blessing.
Yes, it is.
It's a blessing.
Felicidades.
Gracias.
Goku, do you wanna say anything?
Um, I just wanna thank you guys for recognizing me. I lived in Far for the majority of my life, and um, I've always loved it, so being able to be recognized for something that I did is, means a lot.
Well, good. Well, uh, Mom, thank you for, you know, bringing this to our attention. It is quite amazing, your son, Diego, what he did. Obviously, he didn't have to, right? Didn't know anybody there. It's a stranger, but, you know, the best of him, which you and your husband instilled in him, came out, you see? And that hard work of yours truly is paying off, and he saved somebody's life. He's doing his dream, and it's hard for people to leave the Valley, but, you know, he did it, and he's doing it currently. And it shows what any, any child in, in the Valley can do, and I know a lot of people are, are really, you know, held with their family, and that's fine. It's okay. But you must move on and get your dreams, and he's achieving that. So, we're very proud of you, Diego and Mom. Thank you. Thank you for letting us know this, okay? So, Mom, can you come up here? We're gonna take a picture with you, real quick, for Diego, okay?
Thank you all.
Congratulations and thank you. We'll go back to item two A proclamation proclaiming municipal court week.
Great. We have our judges here.
And staff, everybody's part of the court.
Everybody's here, court staff.
Muted.
Should go on and on after. Are you part of the legal?
Yeah.
My bad.
They don't like me.
You are the.
Pass it to Pagastha, so you guys can be balanced out. All right. So, I'm gonna read this proclamation, then I'll let you guys take the floor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. So, whereas municipal courts play significant role in, in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas and the great city of Far, and whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. And whereas the city of Far is committed to the principles that are independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret, excuse me, interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and the judges and the court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and partiality of the judiciary system. And whereas the city council recognizes the constitution and the laws of the state of Texas, supports the municipal court of the city of Far in complying with such legal requirements. Now therefore, I am blessed to be the mayor of the city of Far, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the entire city commission, do hereby proclaim the week of November second through the sixth, twenty twenty, as municipal court week. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Far to be affixed on the second day of November, twenty twenty. There you go. All right, Judge?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, city management and my fellow directors for this recognition. This week is vital, and obviously, we couldn't do it alone as a court. I am, we're a team. Besides belonging to the bigger team of Team Far, we ourselves are a team that we work very hard, but we couldn't do it without your support and with you understanding our role as part of the municipal city government, part of the judicial side of the city government, that we're able to be independent, and that is thanks to your leadership, that you understand our role, you make our job easier. On behalf of myself, I know Judge Martinez, our county clerks, in this case, we have representing Ms. Daisy, who's been part of the staff for four years, Daniela, four years, also our city prosecutor. She's not necessarily part of the court staff, but she's a very important part of municipal court week. Uh, she's our city prosecutor, Chrissy Nojosa, and our bailiff, warrant officer, David Galvio. We're a team. We work hard because our role is to seek justice. We're always striving to be the most respected, the most effective, the most efficient, and most importantly, the most impartial court here in the state of Texas, and we take great pride on that. We realize there's a lot of room for growth, for improvement, and that's a challenge, because we wanna make sure we give the very best to our public, because most people get affected by municipal court in the criminal justice level, and that's something good. And that's why we wanna make sure we do a very good representation. We want them to know who the staff is, what our duties and responsibilities are, and we couldn't do it without your support. So, thank you for each one. Thank you for understanding our role in government, and.
Wonderful. Can you explain to the citizens a little bit about Far Municipal Court Amnesty Program, since you're up there? So, can you educate us a little bit on what that means?
Subject to your approval and commissioners, we're gonna be offering our amnesty program from the day of November third to December thirty first. And what that is, it's a grace period, because unfortunately, when people don't take responsibility and don't show up to either plead guilty or not guilty or no contest to the charges, there's warrants for arrests that get issued because based on the lack of taking responsibility. But during this time, we're gonna waive those charges, fines, court costs, fees, and they can range anywhere from a dollar, two hundred dollars, five hundred dollars. They will be completely waived. Our, people don't have to be afraid to go to the court. They're not gonna get arrested. They're gonna have that opportunity to speak either to myself or to Judge Martinez, and we're here to serve. We're here to help our citizens. We understand that everybody has been going through very difficult moments, especially this year, and that's why we kind of, based on your recommendation, recommended this during this time, because I know many people wanna put their things in order, and sometimes it's difficult because they lack the, the money, but they're gonna be waived completely if they go and try to take care of the matters pending in the court.
Okay, great. Now, about twelve years ago, I got a speeding ticket. I did, I did pay it.
Okay.
And I, I can tell you that people were very, very nice, and they were very professional, by the way. And, you know, I, I can attest to the fact that you're, you guys are doing absolutely a great job from personal experience. I know, and everybody was so professional. That's what I, I really liked about it. And I know you guys are in a, in a, in a position of power. You're intimidating, but I, I am very thankful with the fact that when I went there, people treated me very nicely and, you know, like, I, I wasn't, I was intimidated going to that, that place, right? But the system made it so nice, and I'm glad you guys are that way. And second of all, I wanna be sure you guys understand also, and I know I talked to the chief about this before. You know, a lot of us, including myself, were pretty stupid even in the, in our younger years, and we make dumb mistakes. And we either speed or sometimes we get stopped because, I don't know, maybe we're, we're kinda not in the right lane in the vehicle, or or we just do some crazy things, 'cause that's what teenagers do, and even young college kids, they do it. And we really are pushing with the fact that you're not there to make money for the city of Far, in my opinion. You know, that's not what you're there for. You're there to uphold the law. But at the same time, I need you guys to be a little bit more creative, in my opinion, when it comes to those kind of personnel, because, you know, they make mistakes 'cause they're young. They don't, they really don't know any better, and we really don't wanna affect people's lives by having a, something weigh, weigh them down and where they can't go on into a really meaningful career just 'cause of a dumb mistake. So, I urge you to go back, and before COVID nineteen, we discussed the fact that if there's a, a way for them to do service, right? And if we wanna, I mean, clean, we wanna clean their record, I'd rather them go, like, like, for, for me, what I, what I volunteered was, why don't you have them, pre-COVID, right? Go visit the, there's a lot of elderly people that need homes, that they need help with their yards. They need, you know, they, they're in the adult living centers. They would love to have somebody read a book or play checkers or do something with them. There's a lot of kids that can tutor other kids as well. We have a lot, a massive park system, and they can help clean it up as well. And we're not just gonna give people a, a quick, you know, approval. We're actually gonna track them. We'll film them and make sure that they account for their hours, right? So, everybody gets treated the same. Doesn't matter your socioeconomic class, your rich or poor, it makes no difference, but you get a shot at it. But that way, we keep people's record clean, because again, I was one of those kids, and I'm sure, I don't know about these guys, but, I mean, I made some dumb mistakes when I was young, and I don't want our kids to be in any way harmed, so please consider that. Please put it in your little box of things to do when, when the, when the kids come in, and just be patient. We're all young at, at some point in our lives. But anyway, anybody else have any, anything wanna add, subtract?
That was good.
All right. If not, would you guys come up here so we can take?
Sure, Mayor.
Congratulations, guys.
We're actually using them for a lot of the elderly assistance programs.
Exactly.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Judge. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
On to item three, public testimony. Hilda, anybody sign up? Public hearing, item four, anybody sign up? All righty, man. Item five, city manager's reports. Yes, sir, we do have the engineer's report in the binder. If you have any questions, the city engineers in the audience, but all projects are on time.
Great.
Thank you, Omar. One more thing I have to bring up, some upcoming events. We have movies at the park this Saturday. It was movies at the parking lot. Now it's movies at the park. We're gonna have it at Jones Box Park Saturday, November seventh, six thirty PM. The featured movie will be Coco. That's what the people wanted. Families will be toe-feet apart, marked in circles on the grass, and we'll have ten-foot clearance between them. So, a twelve-foot circle. Instead of having them sitting in their car, they're sitting in a little circle.
Okay.
So, come on and enjoy.
Are you gonna have the police out there?
Sure. Police, code enforcement, have some goodies also. What was that? Free popcorn.
Oh.
Also, Veterans Day is coming up next Wednesday. Veterans Day fireworks show is scheduled for next Wednesday, November eleventh at nine PM. Like I alluded to before, we're having two locations this year simultaneously, one on North, one on South Side. The North Side is eleven hundred East Nolana, and the South Side is nine hundred East Pecina. We have secured, how many? Twelve? Fourteen parking lots? I believe it was, I believe it was fourteen, fourteen private parking lots we secured so people can go park. That, that list will be on the website already. And parking lots will be available. There's a commercial plaza, and the event is live streamed online as well, so make sure you catch it online.
Great.
Any questions on?
Is he not gonna say something here?
Oh, yes, sir. We're getting to that. Hilda, come on up. So, tomorrow is the last day of voting. Tomorrow actually is election day. Early voting's over. I wanted Hilda to come up and touch on some of the changes we had this year and how they're going.
Okay. Mayor and Commissioners, Hilda Pedrassa, Assistant City Manager. As you know, we passed the electioneering ordinance a couple of months ago. So, whatever rules apply during early voting, they're gonna be the same on election day.
Okay. All, all polling sites?
All polling sites. Here in the city of Far, we have seven locations, and the polls will be open seven to seven. And anybody can vote anywhere. It's county-wide polling locations.
Nice. Okay. You wanna name, name the sites for, for the public?
Yes. We have Wagner Elementary on one thousand north, one thousand one North Fur, Development and Research Center, eight fifty West Dicker Road, Liberty Middle School, twelve twelve South Fur, Napper Elementary School, nine oh three North Flag, José Pepe Salinas, ten eleven West Kelly, P S A North High School, five hundred East Nolana Road, Nolana, and Valley View Fifth Grade Campus, that is at ninety-seven oh one South Jackson Road.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Love clarification. You're saying that they can vote, if you're from the city of Far, you can vote anywhere in the county or just in the city of Far?
That is correct.
Anywhere in the county.
Anywhere, as long as it's in Nidoago County.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Hilda. Mayor, I just wanna add a couple of things. So, this year's been a record-breaking year. We had a lot of voters come out. People have come out to vote, which is very, very good. We encourage people to come out to vote. Along with that, increased people comes increased electioneering, comes increased problems. We did try through the new ordinance, and it's working successfully to, to curtail some of the, some of the electioneering. People wanna come in and vote in comfort. We've got a lot of good feedback on the electioneering ordinance. We encourage the public to keep it up, please. I know, and every city in the nation is preparing, not for the worst, but preparing for a very, a very heated election, and people's, people's temperatures rise during that time. We are preparing for that. But we, we do wanna encourage the people to keep following the ordinance. You know what you need to do, please. Don't go and flood the sites with election, election material. Don't go try to run the ordinance. We will have code enforcement and PD out there. We wanna make sure everybody's safe, and everybody does come out to vote.
Great.
Thank you. That's the end of the city manager's reports. Item number six, consent agenda. All items are routine and non-controversial and can be enacted in one motion, so you all so choose. So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven, ordinance resolution seven A consideration action, if any, an ordinance directing the city manager to vacate, abandon, and close a portion of street right-of-way being a portion of East Charm Drive located between lots one and two, Tipo Texas Subdivision, Far, Dow County, Texas. Yes, sir, this is the first reading. This is a strip of right-of-way in between Sioux Road and our event center. It actually is parking lot. It's not paved as a road, although it is a dedicated right-of-way. We have some changes that might be coming to the event center, so we wanna prepare for that. We wanna abandon the right-of-way and make it part of city property.
Okay.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven B consideration action, if any, an ordinance permitting ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty-six relating to the number of authorized civil service positions within the fire and police departments. This is the third and final reading. This is the twelve additional firefighters that's gonna be covered under the grants.
Okay. Approval.
Second. I'm sorry. My bad. Nine additional firefighters. You're right. I'm sorry.
Medina did the motion, and Chavez second. Commissioner Medina. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Almost got away with three more, Chief.
Almost.
Thank you. Seven C consideration action, if any, on extending the boundaries of the present corporate limits of the city of Far, Texas, and annexing new territory into the city of Far consisting of approximately fifty-eight acres lying adjacent to and being situated within extr territorial jurisdiction of the city of Far, Texas. Yes, sir, this is second, second reading. Staff recommends approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven D consideration action, if any, on resolution to determine a public necessity to acquire certain real property, giving notice of the official determination to acquire real property for the public purposes, establish procedures for the acquisition of market value for the property to be acquired, and directing the city manager designated to communicate offers to owners for the purchase of property, appropriate funds, authorized condemnation proceedings by the city attorney, contingent on available funding. Yes, sir, as you remember, a couple of meetings ago, we did purchase, and you all authorized us to start the process of a detention pond on the South Side. That detention pond was actually landlocked. There are two pieces of property that front where the detention pond is gonna go that gives us access to the public road. They were city property before. We gave them to development council so they can build homes for low-income people. That's been a couple of years. They have not built on them yet. So, we're taking them back from the development council so we can have access to the property. All we're gonna be paying is their cost of maintaining the, the right-of-way, I mean, maintaining the lots, which is about seventeen hundred dollars per lot. Motion approved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven E consideration action, if any, on resolution requesting authorization for the Texas Department of Transportation to close US two eighty-one from Cage Boulevard from Havel, or Cage Boulevard from Havelina Road to Juanbaier Road and Olana Loop from Interstate sixty-nine to Veterans Road on Thursday, December twelfth, correction, Thursday, December thirty-first, twenty twenty, for the New Year's Eve fireworks display. Yes, sir, this is just Texas Department permission to close the roads for the fireworks.
Move for approval. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven F consideration action, if any, on resolution supporting the author, and auth, and authorizing the creation of the Ruhr Grand Valley nine-one-one emergency communications district. Okay, so, as you all know, everybody pays fifty cents, right, Danny? Fifty cents on their cell phones, their landlines for nine-one-one services. It's statewide. Right now, the money collected here goes to the state. State gets their cut, and it comes back. This communications district created under the development council, under the COG, will funnel money instead of going to the state. It'll go straight to the communications district, and then they'll distribute it. So, in essence, we're cutting out the state. We're getting more money. Correct? You're keeping more. Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven G consideration action, if any, on resolution authorizing city manager to submit and execute a grant application to the Texas General Land Office under the two thousand fifteen flood state mitigation competition, housing and urban development, most impacted and distressed county. Yes, sir, so, a couple of meetings ago, we've been going, or past couple of meetings, we've been going over the drainage improvements we wanna do on the South Side. This is in line to fund those projects, the drainage improvements from the land for the detention pond to the piping to get to the detention pond, everything south of Dicker and north of Dicker and east of two eighty-one. The amount we're budgeting is eleven million, three hundred ninety thousand. We're applying for a grant for eight million, five hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. The city will cover the, the rest of the twenty percent.
Okay.
Approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight A consideration action, if any, on the Far Municipal Court Amnesty Program for November third, twenty twenty, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this is the amnesty program the judge just spoke about. Staff is recommend approval. Approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight B consideration action, if any, on declaration of certain items and equipment as surplus and authorize the city manager to dispose of via a public auction. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, sometimes throughout the years, we have excess equipment, stuff that has been phased out, old police cars, desks, stuff like that. The legal way is to declare them surplus and see our city property bought with city funds and auction them off. This gives me the permission to go ahead and pursue that and hire an auction firm.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight C consideration action, if any, on proposal for World City for the twenty twenty Far's Trade Numbers Book. Yes, sir, this is a book that gets published every year. It comes, our trade numbers are in there, how many crossings, what's crossing. It's a very useful tool. Bridge already recommend approval. Staff is recommend approval. Approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Nine A consideration action, if any, on the purchase of permeable pavers through a sole-source vendor, TrueGrid, out of Houston, Texas, to be provided by the city of Far as owners furnished material to the award contract for the various parking lot improvement projects. Yes, sir, we did the first kickoff of this TrueGrid to keep the city green and sustainable at the St. Jude's Church. It's coming out pretty good. It does detain water. It's better than pavement, so we are expanding this program. We wanna do the additional parking lot here at City Hall, the parking lot across the street. The, we are gonna build two access points to access the hike and bike trail, one on East M Houston and one in back of PD. So, we're gonna supply the materials. All we're gonna do is hire out the labor to build them.
Okay.
It's approved.
Second.
Second already? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ten A consideration action, if any, authorizing city manager to award item number one, service contract for, to generate chlorine dioxide. Item number two, supply contract for the purchase and delivery of sodium chloride, and item number three, the lease of new equipment to Evoqua? Evoqua? Okay. Water Technologies LLC out of Sarasota, Florida. Yes, sir, we did go out for bids. We had five bidders bid for this project. The low bidder came in at a hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars. This is to keep our water and sewer systems up, up to par. Staff is recommend approval. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You might wanna mention that this is not the lowest bid, right? But the others didn't meet the requirements.
Yes, sir, this, this is the lowest, the lowest responsible bidder. The, the actual low bidder by dollar amount did not meet the requirements of the bid. Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Others all in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ten B consideration action, if any, authorizing city manager to award a service contract for citywide lawn and landscaping to Olympia Landscape Development, Inc. out of Laredo, Texas. Yes, sir, we, we did go out last year in September for lawn services. This is to maintain the, the detailed work, the, the landscaping, the flowers, the trees, the trimming, all of our city buildings. Last year, we had ten buildings on that list for fourteen thousand dollars. Last year, we had ten buildings on that list for fourteen thousand dollars average a month. Uh, this year, we got our new parks, uh, some new buildings we got. The new buildings we're planning on getting, like the new North Side, North Side, um, library. We've already dovetailed in there. Um, so, we're adding seven more facilities to that list, and we're still doing it for the same fourteen thousand dollars. So, we're saving fourteen thousand dollars a month.
Okay.
Staff is recommending approval.
So moved.
Taken.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ten C, consideration action, if any, authorizing city manager to continue maintenance and support services with Frontera Consulting out of McAllen, Texas, for the South Far Pilot Wi-Fi Project. Yes, sir, Frontera Consulting was the ones that came to the table and the initial, um, supplier for the internet and the, and the, uh, maintenance services. Staff is recommending approval at thirty thousand, thirty-nine thousand dollars a year.
So moved.
Taken.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, ten D, consideration action, if any, on contract extension with Al County EMS for nine-one-one services, nine-one-one emergency medical services. This is our current nine-one-one provider. Um, they have had adequate services in the city of Far. Staff is recommending approval to extend the contract.
Okay.
So moved.
Taken.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you. We have a, a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. We are adjourned. Time is at four forty-six. If I can see the commissioners in the back?
Yeah.